Find them, there's this Facebook site you can like, there's a YouTube, there's a website, anything else, Cardenia that...
The album will be posted on Facebook.
The album will be posted on Facebook of those who are going to be honored tonight. That is fabulous. And so these little cards are the back table and so we welcome you now. Other council members to my left, council member Victor Peterson, council member Eddie Cook, council member Ben Cooper, or Vice Mayor Ben Cooper, council member Jared Taylor. The five of us have been entrusted to run tonight's Student Citizen of the Month, we'll do our very best and we are excited to have you here. This is, for the Gilbert Town Council, our favorite gathering of the month because we have the finest of Gilbert here tonight to be recognized. And we will do it in three groups. And once we bring a group down, council member Peterson will announce a name and that person will step forward and will come in this vicinity, take pictures. If you would also like to take pictures, feel free to come down in this area. After a group is finished, if you do need to leave, we'll do a transition of another group. If you can stay for the whole process, we're about 30 minutes. And we welcome you to stay and encourage you to recognize all who will be featured tonight. The first group will be elementary students. If your school begins with the letter A, such as Ashland Ranch, all the way to I, Imagine West, or the Islands Elementary. So from A to I, that is Group One, and if you could come on down and just stand right behind me.
I know, but S comes after A.
Right, but S comes after A. While this group is coming, another interesting announcement I'll make, and just right back here, is that we won't be taking time to talk about each individual and why they were nominated as the Student Citizen of the Month, but there are various reasons. And in talking to some of the teachers and principals, they have said, this is a group that, just on a consistent basis, they're finding ways to make their school better. It might be in the classroom, it might be on the playground, it might have been down the hallway, different things they're doing. But these students tonight have done some great things and we thank you for that. And before we go to Group One, just so we can get this group also recognized, that's not back here, would any of the teachers, principals, school administrators who are here, would you please stand so that we can give you a nice round of applause? Thank you. There is a saying, that the noblest and greatest calling of all is that of teaching. And so for the noblest, thank you. All right, Group One will begin. Council member Peterson, please.
Mayor, the first stop is from Ashland Ranch Elementary, Clark Robinson.
Clark, come here, Clark. Watch Clark closely, what he does, he's gonna stand right there, I'm gonna stand right behind him and smile. And then we're going to give you the packet, Clark, that has all sorts of great stuff in it, and then you can come back. And then in a minute, we're going to do a group picture. Continue.
From Burke Elementary, Sebastian Marquez. From Carroll Ray Ranch Elementary, Andy Ogburn. From Gilbert Arts Academy, Asher Ballou.
Is that Group One?
One more.
One more, okay. All right, Jackson, right back here, and then we're gonna take a picture of you one more time.
From Imagine West, Gilbert Charter, Tiffany Knutson.
What we'd like to do now, is to have Group One step forward and right in this area, we're going to do a group picture. And if any of you would like to take a picture of the group, you may. Let's see, council member Cook is helping us get a little bit closer together. Okay, will that work? That was a wonderful group. And Group Two, if you are in elementary school and your school begins with a J to Z, but is it, what's our first J?
There's no J, Mesquite.
Mesquite, so M to Z, probably Weinberg, but, all right, if you are in elementary school and have not been called up yet, please come forward. Thank you, council member Peterson, you may continue.
First of all, forgive me if I get some of the names wrong, it's a little tricky sometimes. From Mesquite Elementary, Amalie, or Emili Adcock? Amalie. Mom knows. Amalie. Amalie, that makes sense. From Oak Tree Elementary, Juliana Valenzuela. From Playa del Rey Elementary, Anthony Adia.
Is that Group Two? Now, I think what Group Two is ready for now, council is always in favor of shop Gilbert, so ice cream, or treats, or good things like that, and then you can go home and continue to study, or something like that. But a nice big hand for Group Two, thank you. Thank you, you may be seated. Our Group Three, if you are in junior high or high school, please come on down. As Group Three is still coming down, and they may not be in the room yet, but when we have our formal council meeting start at seven tonight, our Mayor's Youth Advisory Council will be presenting to us. Are there any members of our Mayor's Youth Advisory Council in the audience right now? Okay, they'll be coming. And so, for those in junior high and high school, we appreciate this group, these are those leaders, a little bit more mature and doing great things in their schools, and we appreciate them. And so let's continue, council member Peterson.
From Desert Hills High School, Justin Moody. From Gilbert Early College, Rebecca McIntyre. From Gilbert Junior High School, Leah Burkey. From Greenfield Junior High School, Alexandria Malik. From Mesquite High School, Audrey Everett. From South Valley Junior High School, Jerry Zhang. From Williamsfield High School, Soraya Steele.
Group Three will have you step forward for a group picture. Let's give Group Three a big round of applause, thank you. To all who have come tonight, the school support team members, the family members, the parents, grandparents, thank you. This is a group, as I mentioned as we started, that they are making Gilbert bright and vibrant, and they are, tonight, our finest citizens, and so we give them the charge to carry on, keep doing what you're doing. Thank you for coming, the Student Citizen of the Month ceremony is officially ended. You're invited to stay for the formal council meeting if you'd like, which will begin in about two minutes. I won't be saying that. We'll begin in just a moment. Councilmember Cook is going to have all the scouts come forward, we'll get you organized, and one will be assigned to lead us in the pledge. Thank you. We welcome you to the February 21st, 2013 Gilbert Town Council Meeting. I call the meeting to order. We have just completed our Student Citizen of the Month Ceremony, and will now move on to the agenda where it is titled invocation and pledge of allegiance. As noted on the agenda, the invocation may be offered by a person of any religion, faith, belief, or non-belief, as well as council members. A list of volunteers is maintained by the town clerk. An interested person should contact the clerk for further information. The invocation tonight will be offered by Councilmember Victor Peterson, after which Councilmember Cook will introduce one of the scouts to lead us in the pledge. We invite those who are here in council chambers to please arise.
Our Heavenly Father, we're so grateful to be here tonight. We're grateful for our freedoms, we're grateful for the peace and prosperity we enjoy, we're grateful for our associations with one another, we're grateful for the protections that we have of our liberties and our freedoms, that we're safe. We're so grateful that we can express our opinions, that we can hear each other and listen and learn together. Heavenly Father, we just ask that Thou would bless us tonight with Thy Spirit, with clarity, with the ability to make wise decisions that will benefit and bless the citizens of Gilbert. We pray for each of them. We pray that they will fill the desire to help us and instruct us, and we pray that we will always do those things that are helpful and lead us all to greater peace and prosperity. And these things we ask, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
We have a wonderful scout here that will lead us in the pledge allegiance. His name is Ty.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you guys could do me a favor, if you could mention your name and what troop you belong to, and I'll pass the mic down.
My name's Colin McCollough, and I'm in Troop 381.
Colby Phillips, and I'm in Troop 381.
Colton McComber, Troop 381.
Wyatt Stefan, Troop 381.
Brady Phillips, Troop 381.
Ty Skiles, Troop 381.
Kayden Cook, Troop 381.
Sam Hancock, Troop 381.
Dylan Schroeder, 381.
Mason Lundell, Troop 381.
Caleb Gatton, Troop 806.
Pace Power, Troop 806.
Brendan Klingler, Troop 806.
Dustin Phillips, Troop 381.
Teagan.
Noah Jorgensen, Troop 381.
Patrick Kerwin, Troop 806.
Tristan Wolfgram, Troop 81.
Troop 806.
Court Myers, Troop 806.
Chris Wees, 806.
Josh Zoller, 381.
Devin Hawkins, 806.
Alexander Rich, Troop 776.
Brennan Brown, Troop 776.
Mark Eddington, Troop 776.
Justin Allbrant, Troop 776.
Well, thank you very much for coming. May we extend a warm applause, and thank you for these wonderful men and their scouting. We also, on behalf of the council, have given each of them a copy of the Constitution as a gift for them coming here. So again, thank you very much, appreciate it.
To our scouts and scout leaders, thank you. Next on the agenda is the roll call, which will be conducted by our town clerk, Kathy Templeton.
Mayor Lewis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cooper.
Here.
Councilmember Ray. Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels. Councilmember Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
For Miss President.
Thank you. Item 1A is the presentation by our Mayor's Youth Advisory Council. We'll begin. Jennifer Hood, if you could come forward and let the council know, and those at council chambers, your wonderful assignment, and then we'll let you introduce the presenters.
Thank you. I'm Jennifer Hood. I am the MIAC, which is Mayor's Youth Advisory Council Advisor, and so I get the opportunity to work with wonderful students every year. And it's a group of students from all the different high schools in Gilbert and in Higley School District, as well as if you live in the town of Gilbert but go to a different school outside of the school district, you're still available to be on the committee. And so we have everybody from 8th grade to seniors this year, and the committee's made up of about 30 students, and they get together twice a month and come up with community service activities that they want to do. They have two big events that they do, which is Student Government Days, which is coming up in April, and Youth Town Hall, which is what they're presenting on tonight. So Youth Town Hall is an opportunity for the students to get together and discuss topics that are important to them. So this year, they chose texting and driving, they chose bullying, and suicide prevention. And so each one of those groups had about 30 students in it, and so they got together, they discussed the topics, kind of how they would like to come up with solutions, how they would like to prevent some of these things from happening in the future, and then they take those back out into the community, and we try to implement them along the way. So tonight, you get to hear them, kind of what they said in their meetings, what their solutions were, and kind of the overall event, and how they did for it, and they did a great job. The solutions they came up with in their presentations were really, really good. And it gives them an opportunity for leadership and public speaking, which is what they get to do tonight. So I'd like to introduce Ian, who is going to start us out, and his was full name.
Hello. I am Ian Shell, as previously stated, and I'm from Mesquite High School, and my subject was bullying. On December 6th, the Covenant of Schools from across the Gilbert and Higley districts converged to analyze and reconcile various topics that influence day-to-day activities in our town. Meeting with students and discussing issues with bullying, both in the schoolyard and online, our group easily had enough to talk about in the four-hour span we spent together. With the assistance of a board member from Phoenix who operates in the Safety Committee, conclusions were drawn that, like drunk driving, the root of bullying lies in social standards. To purge the problem, a campaign resembling the Mothers Against Drunk Drivers Stand would be required. That group changed the country's attitude and opinion on drunk driving from a minor crime to comparable to murder. Pre-contemplation and brainstorming, the group had divided into separate schools, discussing how to solve such a widespread problem. Upon reformation, a consensus on plans to combat our issue was found, a common theme being anti-bullying clubs or support clubs. Student leaders would come together once a week or when deemed appropriate. Their objective would be to establish a haven for victims of harassment and to keep the administration alerted and informed in the case of tension among their peers. The experience was rewarding for everyone involved and enjoyed by all participants. Student envoys spoke with their heads of administration and principals, and organized with the student body to collect and form the clubs essential to our devised plan. The mission to eradicate bullying has taken another step with our convergence to talk, and the march to tolerance in an efficient learning atmosphere claimed a victory. Thank you.
Thank you, Ethan.
I was never told about questions.
To the council, do we have some questions? But you asked the right question, so thank you, Ethan.
Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name's Tuan No, chairperson of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council, and I'm here to present to you our solutions for a current problem we have with teen suicide. Obviously, the first thing we had to determine was why people kill themselves, and we found out that it was loss of connection to end the pain, and obviously because they are sad. Now, we do have existing tools, such as the hotline or the Resource Center. However, we came up with new ones. We determined that a person will not have suicidal thoughts if they're happy. So we came up with solutions, such as support groups, to be able to motivate the students and teenagers, as well as events in schools, such as food fights, to get people involved in the school, because generally, students that are involved in school are less likely to be depressed or have any of those feelings. In addition, we also would like to increase school spirit, and that's a very easy thing to do, and very inexpensive as well. So those are the main points of our solutions we have for teen suicide. Are there any questions?
Thank you for covering that topic. We appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Matt Porter. I'm from Gilbert High School, and I am here in place of Hunter Henderson, who unfortunately could not make it here tonight. However, instead of using a visual display in an essay, I'm going to try and move you with how we approach the students in the MIAC Committee at Youth Town Hall. So, first off, we started with facts about why and what happens when you are texting and driving. So, to start, when you are texting and driving, think of it this way. Just the simple word of "hey" can distract you for up to about five seconds. Now, think about this. If you're driving at 55 miles an hour, that is the entire length of a football field. Now, just imagine, in that amount of length and amount of time, what could possibly happen to other people around you on the road, and including yourself and whoever happens to be in the car with you? Now, over in the year in 2011, there were about 1.3 million car crashes due to texting and driving. It's ridiculous. It's too much, and it isn't what we need, especially for our students here in Gilbert and other residents of Gilbert. Now, what we devised is an awareness week at all the schools. See, if we get the movement started among the students, the students could relate it to younger generations, and of course, their parents as well. So, through the Awareness Week, prior to the Awareness Week, we decided to kick it off with a T-shirt design contest, which we would use later, to whoever won would...I'm sorry, hold on, I need to gather my thoughts. Whoever won, we would use their design later in the week, on a Thursday, which would conclude the Awareness Week. However, on Monday, we decided we would start out with a video showing to all the students of just happenings and whys, and all of misunderstandings about texting and driving, why it's so serious. Then on Tuesday, when the PR representative from AT&amp;T told us that she would help us in this, and providing us with a simulator for texting and driving, where a bunch of distractions would be going on around you... distractions would be going on around you, and the students can interact and be involved with the simulator, and learn about why it's such a serious matter. On Wednesday, we decided that we would have the entire school come together in an assembly room, or even just stay in their classrooms, where students could talk about past events, or even history with texting and driving, where they could involve all of the negative events that might, that may have happened to them, and try and move the students. On Thursday, the student design for the T-shirt would be handed out to all the students, where they would be able to wear their T-shirts that day, and then go to a poll where they would sign their initials, saying that they pledge to no longer text and drive. So, this was our project, we hope that we can continue to pass this on to future generations and those around us, that texting and driving is distracted driving, it goes hand-in-hand with drunk driving, and should not be allowed in Gilbert, Arizona. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
I was just going to say, too, that AT&amp;T actually brought the simulator car to Gilbert High School right at the end of January, and we had about 75 students actually participate in that, actually drive the car, and we had hundreds of people come through and sign the pledge that they would no longer text and drive, and the simulator was really, really interesting. We got to watch it from the outside, and they ran over a whole lot of stuff, that I'm really hoping that these people weren't driving a lot and doing that, so. Do you have any other questions for the committee?
I was just going to give a, an expression of appreciation, and council members may want to comment on this, too. So we have 30 of our youth that are in various parts of Gilbert, that come together two times a month. They focus on leadership and working together, and at the recent Town Hall Day, these are the three topics that were picked, and they've already taken that knowledge and information back to their schools to try and make improvements in Gilbert. And so we appreciate these topics that are relevant to the youth and to the adults, of texting while driving, and bullying, and then the suicide watch. And so, thank you for the efforts, and any other comments from the council that you would have? Jennifer, anything else you'd like to say?
Nope, I think that's it, thank you guys.
So with the council, we're going to give another big round of applause to the entire Mayor's Youth Advisory Council. And we better quickly join this picture. Yes. Before you separate, those that did not get a chance to introduce themselves, let's give you, say your name and which school you're with. Again, this gives us a chance to give a good fill for the representation that we have from our various schools in the Gilbert area.
Hey, I'm Ian, I'm from Mesquite.
My name's Tuan No, I'm from Gilbert High School.
My name's Matt Porter, and I'm from Gilbert High School.
I'm Samon Felly, and I'm from Gilbert High School.
I'm Albert Godleski, and I'm from Williamsfield High School.
I'm Leona Wayne, I'm from Gilbert High School.
I'm Jennifer Lee, I'm from Gilbert High School, go Tigers!
I'm Elise, and I'm from Mesquite High School.
I'm Dan Leonard, I'm from Williamsfield High School.
I'm Ezra Katch, and I'm from Williamsfield High School.
And I'm Nicholas Anderson, and I am from Williamsfield High School as well.
I don't think you could find better, let's give them a right, big round of applause, thank you. Our town manager will now lead us in the next agenda item.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could have all of the town of Gilbert staff that were involved with the water main break and are here tonight to come down to the front of the podium? Okay, Mayor, members of the council, the individuals that are here before you tonight are the first responders who handled and responded to the water main break incident we had on January 25 of this year. I want to read a very brief description of what they did, and then if we could, I'd like to have each one of them introduce themselves to you and the community so that we can recognize them for a job very well done for our residents. On Friday, January 25, at approximately 2:30 PM, an eight-inch potable water main break occurred in the area of the Heritage District near Gilbert Road and the railroad tracks. Emergency response crews were immediately dispatched to the scene, and due to the location of the break, Gilbert Road had to be hard-closed to both the northbound and southbound traffic for approximately 24 hours, so crews could isolate the water main, excavate and repair the water main, inspect the condition of the roadway, and conduct site cleanup. Crews worked around the clock until the water main was repaired and the site was secured, mostly in very poor weather conditions, that included a lengthy and heavy rainstorm, and because of the location of the water main break was in close proximity to the railroad tracks, representatives from the Union Pacific Railroad also responded and stayed on scene to ensure the integrity of the tracks was maintained, as well as the safety of the public and all scheduled rail traffic during the town's response actions. Put very kindly, I think, for anybody, and for these gentlemen and women that were here tonight, it was a non-stop rain that started that afternoon and went solid through all the way into Sunday. In fact, I saw on the news that weekend that it was the largest recorded rainfall in Phoenix in quite some time. It was cold temperatures, I think we had four mark rail cars come through during that time, and, and when we say it was close, it was maybe 10 feet mark from the tracks. So a lot of concern about the stability of the tracks and the conditions. It was a very old line, and it was not an easy repair to make, we had a lot of, it's an older line, we had a lot of older valves, I think in total, we had seven valves that we ended up shutting off. We also put some insertion valves in place to finally get that water stopped. I think it wasn't until 4:30 in the morning, we got the water completely shut off, and then we could begin the process of actually repairing the line. So it was not easy work. They did a great job beyond just that night of getting it, the new line put in place. We also kept two lanes of traffic open, one lane in each direction, north and south. This was the week before the Super Bowl, it was right in front of a Gilbert business, it was leading right into the heart of our Heritage District, so they did a phenomenal job, from start to finish, under very extreme weather conditions with a very nasty break. So we are very, very proud of the work they did that nightmare, and if we could, I'd like to have each one of them introduce themselves and who they are, who they work, which department they work for in the town, and then we'll...
Mark, we'll let you start it off.
Mark Horn, Public Works Department.
Brian Quill, Wastewater.
Ray in Water Distribution.
Josh Millen, Fire Department, Station 3.
Jason Heiny, Streets Department.
David Mignell, Water Distribution.
Mike Connor, Fire Department, Station 3.
Roger Arblebide, Fire Department, Station 3.
Jonathan Roscoe, Station 3.
Brent Taisom, Parks Recreation.
Edgar Redina, Engineering.
Sherry Gibbons, Gilbert Fire.
Jason Roman, Gilbert Police.
Mike Ender, Gilbert Police.
And Dave Rodriguez, Fire.
Town Manager Patrick Banjer, this is, in front of our civic, or in front of our Town Hall, we have a street that is named American Heroes' Way. And so tonight, on behalf of the council and town leadership, this is our group of American heroes, also known as our Gilbert Heroes. If you could give them a nice, big round of applause. And Edgar, we're going to scoot in a little bit and do that team picture. Patrick, I'll let you take that bookhand, I'll take this one. Thank you. Before we do our communication from citizens, one or two quick items of note of current events, and we'll see if other notes come forward, then we'll do a second part of that at the end of the meeting. We thank our Gilbert Visual Arts League for the presentation of some wonderful pieces of art that were displayed the last two weeks, and some judging took place, and we have some, some winners, but I had a chance to visit and look at all of the pieces of art, and they were just great representation of talent in Gilbert. Also, this month is the Black African-American Heritage Month, and on display at the Regional Library at Greenfield in Guadalupe, are pieces of artwork, as you enter the library, that we encourage you this month to go and take a look at as part of that celebration. We also have coming up, you'll see more information about this, but on Saturday, March 23, will be the Mayor's Character Race and Relay. This will be a family event, and more information will be coming, but as you hear about it, please note that on your calendars. The fundraising that will take place with this event will be for our Character Counts Program that will take place in May, and we look forward to that. Anything else from the council related to current events that are applicable for right now? Thank you. Next on the agenda, the communication from citizens, as noted on the agenda, and Vice Mayor Cooper, I should probably ask, do we have some requests?
I don't have any, Mayor.
Maybe I'll just confirm as I look in council chambers. Okay. Susan, I believe I can move on then without reading what's on the agenda, scan. On the consent calendar portion of the agenda, all items listed below are considered consent calendar items and may be approved by a single motion unless removed at the request of council for further discussion or action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. Vice Mayor Cooper, what request do we have for the consent calendar?
I move that we approve items 6, 9, and 10, pulling item 8 for further discussion.
And would this be the appropriate time to, the items to be continued to include that?
One of them's a public hearing item, so I'd look to our attorney on that. The administrative, administrative item 15, if possible, I'd move that we continue that to March 7 as part of my motion on the consent calendar.
Yes, that'd be fine, as a public hearing, I would do a separate, under the public hearing, second.
Susan, just to confirm, so we will do that separately?
No, item 15 is fine to be included to continue to...
In the continuance, okay, thank you. Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, please vote. That's approved with a 5-0, 5-0 vote, thank you. And Vice Mayor Cooper, I was making note, and let me just confirm, it's agenda item 8?
Agenda item 8.
Okay.
Member Taylor.
Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Special events is, are a fun thing to look forward to, and especially the 4th of July, and it's something that I really love, and one of the greatest things to celebrate in, you know, the birthday of our country, and in so many great ways that we celebrate that. So I definitely support the agenda item, and happy to, you know, vote in for, for it right now, or, but I did want to just throw a couple of ideas out and see if there's anything in perhaps an amendment to this motion that we would want to consider tonight. And there's certainly in our constituency voices that would like to see budget-neutral approaches to special events, including the 4th of July. And, you know, while, while I would certainly support this without this, I, I think those voices are important to, to recognize, and especially if there's practical ways to do it that are beneficial to the community. And with special events, I think one of the keys is to get as many people involved, make it big and fun, especially in a birthday setting like this. And so, with, with that in mind, I'd love to see more business sponsors involved here to help maybe perhaps offset the cost, or maybe offset it in, in terms of donating some things in kind, and great business partners that are commonly involved in special events like this, and municipalities around. So perhaps a thought that we could consider tonight is either direction, or maybe I'll use the word a challenge, because a special event is, is kind of a fun thing, a challenge to staff to help offset the cost by contacting some businesses and raise the equivalent amount of money that we would approve tonight, so the effect would be a budget-neutral outcome. And I would be willing, if there's other support here, to propose an amendment to the motion, but I thought I'd just put that out and, and see if there's thoughts on that, and happy to propose that amendment to that.
Thank you. Councilmember Cook?
Some thoughts here, because one of the things I think about when we have an event like this, is that it is a large draw of Gilbert residents and possibly residents of other communities that come to visit, and I know that it could be considered, in a sense, a activity of tourism for the town of Gilbert, and that we may have folks that shop Gilbert during that event, and I know that we probably would accrue additional sales revenue from an event like that, so I'm not too sure, you know, what the magic number would be, as Councilmember Taylor indicated, as to offset that revenue, you know, neutral aspect of this. So, it's a little bit hard to, you know, pick a, pick a number or target, I think, right now with that, but, I mean, I do like the idea of, if we could, you know, get, you know, sponsors, you know, possibly the Southwest Ambulance to maybe, you know, contribute a little bit. I'm not too sure, trying to make it neutral could possibly happen, but, you know, I think we can help offset some of that.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, one of the things I wanted to do was thank, thank staff for bringing this item forward in such a timely manner. I know last year was quite a bit more of a time crunch, and so I do think with this amount of lead time, it has given us a little flexibility to explore some of these options. I very much support the same notion that we, we see what we can do. I'm in favor of a, you know, full cost recovery approach to all special events, even though I have to admit, this is probably my favorite event, and if I was going to choose based on my own preferences, I would like to subsidize this one, but I just want to have an even approach with everyone, and, so, anyway, I would support continuing for maybe a couple weeks, I think we've got time for that, to just explore and see what sponsorships we could secure.
Councilmember Taylor, do you, that was a slight different comment of continuing as a potential, do you want to make a motion with some of the comments you made, or did you want to have another couple of weeks to consider options and then present it again?
I'm comfortable if we want to continue it, but I'm also comfortable moving forward in, you know, as an amendment, you know, to, to provide that direction, I think the I think the outcome is the same, and so if anybody has any strong thoughts on that.
Vice Mayor Cooper?
My own personal feelings are that I think going forward, as it's been presented to us, is perfectly legitimate and a fine use of public funds to support this event, especially since it is not our event. Rather than, while I appreciate those points and actually find some value in them, I would lean more toward Councilmember Peterson's suggestion to just give it a couple of weeks to actually talk with the host of the event, because it's kind of, we can't really force sponsorships on them, and so I'd want to approach them and see what their feelings are. And if it's just not appropriate this year, the way things are set up, then I say we move forward as presented here. The other option would be just to move forward as presented here, but then add some direction that staff have those discussions, and if possible, find some sponsorships. If that, I'm not sure if, Melanie, is there an approach based on the discussions you maybe you've had with the host of the event that would lean one way or the other?
Mayor, Councilmember Cooper, we have not specifically had conversations regarding providing a sponsorship package or option to outside organizations on behalf of an outside organization's event. So I believe it would be a unique approach for us to talk with them, to develop how that would work, since they do all the marketing and advertising, and in essence have been providing what would normally be the benefits to the sponsor. So that would be having to try to create a joint program together, and whether or not they would look to offset their own costs with those sponsorships, that would be something we'd have to work out.
So there probably would be some validity in having some discussions with our host site and bringing this back, and I think we still have time, and so I would entertain a motion to continue it.
Yeah, my only other thought is I'd like staff to, because the sponsorship program for the year for the Town of Gilbert events is well underway, if not already programmed out and funded, and we've already gone and made the rounds and talked to many sponsors for all of our events this year and offered certain packages, and this wasn't one of them, I would be a little bit concerned about going back out and doing that again and having our staff do that. I'd rather this be a piece of a complete package, maybe even like we mentioned the other night, for next year. I am willing to press pause for a little bit, but I don't want to put staff in a position that is challenging, and I certainly don't want to put council in the fundraising mode like we were a couple of years ago. I don't think that's fair for anyone involved either. So if we want to press pause and have that conversation, that's great, but again, as I said earlier, I'm prepared to move forward as it is here.
Thank you. Would you like to put that in motion?
Mayor, I would move to continue this item to our next regular council meeting with adding the direction to staff to talk with the host and discuss options and ideas for sponsorships.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, please vote. That is approved with a five oh vote, thank you. To Vice Mayor Cooper, just to confirm, on our public hearing items, 14 was moved to continue. And did you also include 15?
No, 15 was in our consent calendar motion. 14 has not yet been. We were counseled to do that separately.
All right, that makes sense, so.
15 wasn't in the consent calendar motion. I heard it as the consent calendar approved and also to continue 15. That's kind of important on this item.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
And so do we still need to have a discussion about 14?
You still need to continue that to the next meeting.
Okay. But I would go ahead and read the verbiage on the public hearing, open 14, have that taken care of, and then we'll get back to the others. Okay, thank you. As noted on the agenda, items 11 through 14 will be heard at one public hearing, at which time anyone wishing to comment on a public hearing item may do so. And Vice Mayor Cooper, I noticed that we have one, if needed, to speak, but if not needed, and so we'll pay attention to that. And do we have any other requests to speak tonight on these public hearing items? Okay. Then I will not read the rest of what's noted on the agenda, and will move to agenda item 14 to open the public hearing on agenda item 14, and to close the public hearing item on agenda item 14. And Vice Mayor Cooper, could you please make a motion?
Move that we continue item 14 to the March 7th council meeting.
Second.
There's a motion, second, please vote. That's approved with a five oh vote, thank you. And because we did not have any, but we do have the one request, and that would be for agenda item 11, if need be, to the council, before I open the public hearing for 11, 12, and 13, would you have some discussion that you want to have on it, or should we put them all together? Okay, all right. I open the public hearing on agenda items 11, 12, and 13. Any discussion from the council, or requests to have staff make any comments? Okay. I close the public hearing on agenda items 11, 12, and 13, and will entertain a motion.
I would motion that we approve agenda items 11, 12, and 13.
Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion, second, please vote. Those items are approved with a five oh vote, thank you. Agenda item number 16, consider the approval of a voluntary residential demolition program guidelines. And we did have brief discussion of the study session. Do we need additional discussion tonight? Are we ready to proceed with a motion? Councilmember Cook? I will entertain a motion.
I motion that we approve agenda item 16.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, please vote. That is approved with a five oh vote, thank you. We had an addition to our agenda that we talked about in the study session, and this would be agenda item 17. And Mark, if you could come forward. And to the council, I'm going to hand out a document that was prepared. And Mark, we'll put this, and Mark, why don't you, I'll give a quick overview, and then I'll have you introduce yourself and give the details. We will be meeting an executive session at the end of our meeting to continue discussion that has taken place about the town attorney selection. And what Mark will be presenting is the process, and we want to make sure that our citizens know, excuse me, what will be happening in the coming weeks, and so this is a summary of that process. This is stamped draft, and so we'll ask the council to look at it. If there's any suggestions, adjustments that you would like to make, this is the time to do it. There are also a couple of questions that are listed here, and so, Mark, at this point, with that overview, I'll ask you to introduce yourself and give us some of the details of the sheet.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm Mark Boynton with the town's Human Resources Department. And what you have before you is a proposed selection process for the town attorney position. Early on in the process, we identified through an ideal candidate profile that was put together and an environmental assessment, certain competencies that the council wanted to address in selecting the town attorney. So what you see is reflective of that profile and assessment. What we propose is that each of the candidates that's selected to go further in the interview process be given the opportunity to present in a public forum, and to give some insight into what they, how they would structure the office of the town attorney, and with some special emphasis on the council's wishes, not to restrict the growth of that office, and not have it grow out of proportion with what the council intends. And then that would take place in the first day of the selection process. And it was also expressed, as a wish by the council, that there be an opportunity for some of the public, you know, at their choice, to be able to meet the candidates and get to know them a little bit. We also propose a meet and greet with the council at the end of that first day. On the second day, we propose three separate interview panels, one with the council, one with leadership stakeholders, and then the third with legal experts. And we propose that each of those interviews, we allocate about an hour and 15 minutes for each of those, and we can put together a more detailed schedule for you to take a look at also. We, well, I guess I should ask at this point, as you see this, if you have any questions, or if there's anything that I can clarify for you?
Not questions, but I'll also point out to the council, and then see if there are additional comments or questions, that for the legal team, so it's proposed there would be three interview teams, and the legal team, there are some thoughts about who would be on that, that town leadership has proposed. Now, it would be some of the individuals that have worked closely with the town from a legal perspective, but we also have individuals that we may be aware of that would be good candidates to be on that team. And so, as noted, it is an invitation for the council to give to Human Resources, and it could be, it could be Mark, I see the finger to Mark, so it would be Mark that we would give those names to, that if we have suggestions, individuals that we're aware of, and especially Gilbert citizens, that would fit into that category, being able to help with the interviews from a background of legal skills and such, that they could be considered to be on that team. And so Mark would be the one that would receive suggestions from the council, and we have until the end of February to give him those names. The second part, Mark, I'm just kind of jumping in tentatively, the timeframe would be, and this is at the very bottom of the sheet, well, excuse me, it's noted before that the interviews might take place during the last week of March, and I believe that's March 25th to the 29th timeframe. And to the council, as you consider various factors, including your own personal schedules, including realizing that we'll be bringing several individuals together to do the interview process on the second day, do we have a preference, whether it would be a Monday, Tuesday, realizing that it would be Monday afternoon, Tuesday morning, or Tuesday, Wednesday, all the way to Friday and Saturday? Do we have any feedback we can give to Mark tonight as to our preference? Councilmember Peterson?
Friday, Saturday. I'll just, might as well start off with mine.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Cooper?
I think a Thursday, Friday may be best for some of the legal and technical team members, but, so that'd be my preference.
And Vice Mayor Cooper, I understand, Councilmember Peterson, from a council perspective, and so that we can continue to juggle other work assignments, that would be best. And just to clarify, you work a lot with those in the legal field, and so Fridays tend to be a date that helps them. If they were to come on Saturday, would we have a challenge getting some of them, and Friday would be a better day? Is that what you're saying?
I think it would be better. Would we still be able to fill a panel on a Saturday? We probably would.
Okay, thank you. Other comments from the council? Councilmember Cook?
I believe Easter is on the 31st.
So that's Sunday.
That's Sunday, so if we were thinking the 29th and 30th, that's Good Friday.
Yeah.
I'm thinking that may not be so good.
Okay. And interesting, that's a tentative week, but that's excellent feedback, something that had not been discussed in our prior meetings. And Councilmember Taylor, anything you wanted to add?
I'll just add another vote for Fridays. That's good, but I can be flexible.
All right. You'd be Friday, Saturday?
Friday, Saturday.
Friday, Saturday, okay. All right. So, Mark, with that feedback and a reminder of an Easter weekend, which will be a factor, we'll give you that feedback, and we'll proceed. Before we close this portion of the meeting, is there any other feedback on the process? Does everything else look okay? Okay. So the conceptual plan works, we'll let you now put the details into action. Thank you. Agenda item 18. Don, we'll have you proceed in talking about the December 2012, excuse me, budget report.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Dawn Irvine with the Office of Management and Budget. And just a quick overview for you today. The budget report, as you see before you, I wanted to talk about some of the exceptions that you'll see on the expenditure report. Most glaringly, you'll see on the general fund side, a rather large number there that's under budget. Most of that is primarily due to the contingency appropriation. We talked a couple of meetings ago about putting a portion of that down below and calling that out. Had the opportunity to speak with Councilmember Peterson this last week about a potential change to the format, and we'll be coming back to council with a new format that'll clarify that further in the upcoming meetings. So the largest portion of that, as you see up there, is the, oh, thank you, the non-departmental, the $13.3 million there in the variance for non-departmental, and again, that's primarily attributable to the contingency appropriation that's available for council use, but not necessarily expected that we would be spending that full amount. Additionally, you'll see up there that we also have transfers that are not, that have not been made yet in this year. As we look at the distributed budgets, we typically, we look back historically to see about the times of year that those types of transfers normally occur. They're not something that have to be done at a given time, and as of this particular report, we had anticipated in the budget that those transfers would occur during the month of December. They hadn't yet occurred, but they are still on track to do so. So again, you'll see that resolve itself over the course of the next couple of months. Beyond that, we are still consistently moving forward on the revenues, as you've heard much over the last few months, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Councilmember Cook?
I know that we make a payment to our big, big loans. We do an interest payment in December, correct? And then we do a principal and interest in June. Is that correct?
We do a separate interest payment and a separate principal and interest payment, yes, then again in June.
So when I look at the expense summary, is that actually listed as an item here?
That is also, that would also fall within non-departmental.
That's what I thought it was going to be.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
And one more comment. And again, as you know, I like to subtract the, maybe I'll let you talk about the actual revenues before I say anything.
I would be happy to, sir. I do appreciate and can follow a little bit up on that. What we would like to highlight is that our revenues do continue to move forward at a positive pace. We are still seeing consistent movement forward, particularly in the sales tax. I do question when we compare the expenditures and revenues, particularly at this time of the year, when we have certain payments that we'll hit that are larger in nature, and so we'll see the comparison between the revenues and the expenditures shift from one month to the next. But we can certainly say that as we look at this, we're continuing to move forward in a very positive direction as a town. Again, our revenues, and particularly those related to sales tax, again, consistently moving forward, and our expenditures as a result of the zero-based budget process and the responsible financial management are on track as well.
Thank you. Please.
Again, you know, the nice part about this report is that I think I reflect on last year compared to this year, and again, it's wonderful to see that town, the town organization, you know, just being very fiscally responsible with our expenses, and we're also very grateful for the amount of shopping that happens in Gilbert. So with that as a combination, we're doing, you know, in my opinion, very, very well.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Is there a motion to approve, let's see, or to accept the budget report for December 2012?
I motion that we approve agenda item 18.
Second.
With that motion, a second, please vote. Thank you. Approved with a five oh vote. I think I will skip 19, I'll come back to it, and 20, we did discuss of the study session. Are we ready to move forward with that, or is there discussion? I will entertain a motion on agenda item 20.
Mayor, I move to approve item number 20.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion, a second, please vote. A motion and second, please vote. That is approved with a 5-0 vote. Thank you. Agenda item 19, boards, commissions, and committees. Councilmember Peterson, I'll start with you. I realize we have some sad news.
Mayor, it is with deep regret that I have this announcement tonight. Mayor, we just got the email from our town staff. I'll just read it. It is with deep sadness and regret that we inform you of the passing of our friend and design review board member, Gary Pedersen. We do not have funeral arrangements at this time. However, we will communicate this information as soon as it becomes available to us. So we share our condolences to the Pedersen family, and certainly our thoughts and prayers are with them.
Thank you. Other reports from our boards and commissions? Councilmember Taylor?
It was my pleasure last night to swear in the new arts, tourism, arts, culture, and tourism board. And while Councilmember Ray is going to be the liaison there, it was fun to be part of that and see them introduce themselves with all those people that we were recently able to interview, and I'm looking for great things for that. Councilmember Ray is going to provide some great leadership. They have great chair.
Who is, there was a chair elected last night, is that right?
I happened to step out before the final...
But a chair was elected, that's good.
Yeah, they elected new leadership, and a lot of great enthusiasm. Probably half of the board is new, and it's just great to see a nice mix between those with an arts background and those with business backgrounds that are trying to help with some of the marketing and promotion of it. Anyways, it's going to be really good.
Thank you. And I think Melanie can announce the chair, please.
Mayor, councilmembers, the new chair of the act board is Diane Fales, and the vice chair is Gene Smith.
Thank you. Good. Councilmember Taylor, thank you. Any other reports from my left and to my right? Okay, thank you. Future meetings, one question that was asked of me, we have in, at our next study session is March 5, and then after the study session is a joint meeting with the design review board at 6:00 PM. And I believe, is there a Parks event on that Tuesday night, March 5, or is that on a different night?
Mayor, councilmembers, that is our last public open house meeting evening on March 5. It'll be at the Southeast Regional Library. It does go from 5 to 8. It'll be a short presentation at 5:30 from the consultants, and then the public will be invited to provide feedback, and then there'll be another presentation at 6:30. And again, if there's another set of folks there, they can provide feedback as well. So we invite the entire community to come out, review some of the current existing standards that are being identified, and give their thoughts for the future plan for the Parks and Recreation Department.
Great. Are the 5:30 and the 6:30 presentations the same?
Mayor, councilmembers, yes, they are the same presentation. We designed it more as an open house so that hopefully some folks can stop by at different times, be provided the same information, and still be able to give input.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Agenda item 22, report from town manager on current events.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I want to recognize a Gilbert employee who was recently awarded the Associate's Award for Excellence in Leadership at the ACMA Spring Conference. That was her own Nicole Daly, one of our assistant two, the managers. She was just recognized just a couple of weeks ago. So that is a very high honor for Nicole and well-deserved. We're proud to have her part of our team. And it's also of note that Andy Welsh, our other, one of our other assistant twos, was the first ever winner of this award in 2008. So we're very lucky to have both of them on our team, and congratulate them on their recognition. It's well-deserved. Also, and there will be more information forthcoming, but tomorrow we kick off our official Spark App Lead contest in partnership with ASU Poly and Intel. It's the first one of its kind in the state of Arizona. We're going to have teams of high school students from all around the region, the East Valley, the West Valley. It's open to anyone to participate, and this is the effort as part of our digital government initiative towards creating higher levels of transparency, communication, and accessibility of our data by our population. Our local high school teams are going to compete to take data sets that we've put together for them and create some mobile smartphone applications of value to our residents and our businesses. So a lot more information forthcoming, but that'll be kicked off tomorrow at the ASU Poly campus, and then we're going to have an event in May to pick our winners.
And I understand that Intel is very impressed.
Yes.
This is something they've never seen done before.
Correct.
And they're saying things like, "This is Gilbert."
Absolutely, they are, Mayor. They are a leader in mobile technology for smartphones. They create the majority of the cutting-edge chips that the new smartphones are running on. So they are very excited about Gilbert's pioneering leadership in this field and glad to be a part of it.
Thank you.
You.
Agenda item 23, report from council members on current events. Vice Mayor Cooper?
Mayor, this may be more of a future item, I'm not sure, but it's, I just want to, it's a calendar item that I wanted folks that are interested in our downtown to be aware of. On March 1, that's Friday, from 8:30 to 3:30, we will have, we've been partnering with the Arizona State University Masters of Real Estate Development Program, as they have been looking at properties owned by the Town of Gilbert within the Heritage District. Several groups, they were assigned to several groups and looked at several properties. They'll be making their presentations that day to their faculty and to the panel, and they'll be doing it here in council chambers. So if you, those that are interested may also be here from 8:30 till about 3:15 that day, and we will be also videotaping it for people to watch at another time if that isn't convenient for them. But I wanted everyone to be aware of that for March 1. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, I wanted to highlight on Saturday, February 23, at the Gilbert Historical Museum, there's the Night, can't remember the exact title.
Night of Lights.
Night of Lights, thank you.
Night at the Museum. Night of Lights is in December, but that's why we have a council.
Night at the Museum.
Like the movie title.
I'm pulling it up on the webpage, and the good news, it looks like it's sold out, which is great. And what a great thing to preserve our cultural history in Gilbert. So even though it's sold out, and if you haven't had a ticket, there's still ways to contribute and donate, and would just encourage everyone to do that. That's just a great thing for our community.
It is sold out. I was there this afternoon. We have ways to fit in a few more if there's an interest.
Get a shoehorn out.
Yes. Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I just want to do a last call for our We Are Gilbert breakfast this coming Tuesday morning from 7:30 to 9:00 AM at the Southeast Regional Library. And really, we invite anyone and everyone who wants to take a leadership role in rallying volunteers to serve their fellow citizens in Gilbert. So we're excited about that event, and just want to send one out, give one more reminder on that.
Thank you. I am pleased to report that today we attended both the state of the city in Scottsdale and this evening at Chandler, and love the regional cooperation with those cities. I'm also pleased to report that the loudest applause that came today in Mayor Lane's presentation is when he put up a slide that showed the world championship baseball team that has their spring training in Scottsdale. And I did send our town manager a text message at that moment, just to let him know that the applause was loud and clear, and something about Giants. The last item I might just bring up, not to just pull them out of the audience, but John, do you want to bring your scouts up to be introduced? Because we introduce them at the start of the meeting, they get a copy of the Constitution. How do you feel about that? Bring them on down, and Councilmember Cook, we will end with this before we recess to our executive session. John, this will be a nice opportunity to introduce you again, representing our state and in a very key assignment in the state with the budget and strategic planning. John, if you can introduce yourself, and I think you're probably, are you introducing yourself as a scout leader tonight?
No, no, sir, I'm not.
But just, you're the driver of the scouts?
As a father.
Okay, great.
These are my boys. This is Sam and Jake Arnold, and they're scouts. He's a star scout and a tenderfoot, and we're just knocking on merit badges.
And are you a merit badge counselor for?
I do a couple of merit badges.
There's probably a few merit badges that you could probably be a counselor for, but we appreciate John and his efforts at the state level and the governor's office. And to the two sons, thank you for keeping an eye on your dad and bringing him to a council meeting. And we'll give you a big round of applause, too. Is there a motion to recess this regular meeting and reconvene in executive session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We will reconvene.